Hello. So. The people can join in and they can watch what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna quickly gonna start with the where we left off yesterday. Here we are. We have this thing and I was showing you guys. Grab dock. Okay, so I will send you the grab dock link also. And let me quickly. Put it in the chat so other people can join. Also. Okay. So. Let people join, people join. Meanwhile, I'm working on things. Where is the chat window? Okay, and then let me. Get the. Grab dock. So. Here is the grab down link you can. Have and see it. So I will just show you quickly. If I just hide this one. Here is the grab dock and use a setup scene and it just give error. Maybe it's the version I have four, so it should work. Let me see if I can get it. In five, I have five alpha as well. And now. Let's see if we can. We have Grab Dock, let me. So Grab Dock. They not install. See if we find them an extension. Because sometime nope. That's weird. Let's try again. Try this one. Okay, so this was. Not made in four, not in five, so it's okay, it's okay. So. Just continue with the church. I will but born below. Is it like that? On again. So. You can't write it. Can you share your Discord ID, exact Discord ID? I will have a look. See. Is it regarding bootcamp? Is it regarding something else? So you can't see any channel or public channel or bootcamp channel? Let me know more. What you can't see in there, where you can't message. So let me. So this is good. I don't want to delve too much into it. Just simply as I showed, what I want to work on is church now. Okay, as we made some of the stuff, but some more stuff we need to make. In here, I would grab, we have. This. Although we have this, also have this partition. But I'm gonna combine some things from here as well. They have these diagnosis labs and they have this partition. And then we can change the design as per our requirements. So. Why always on top is not. Ctrl Shift A yes, that's weird. So I will go here. And. How to see? Yeah, so this is basically it. Like we need to repeat some stuff. But I believe it is there, so. For now, I will keep it modular. But later on, I want to change it. To. Unique basically. By club it basically later on I want to. Now, we already have some partition here. Which we can utilize simply. Oh, I will do that. Little bit. Increase the selection. And. In UVs. Rotating it, we can make it larger if we need to. Yes, we have. Simply. Going in different direction just to okay that it works if I select all of it. And I will just. Move it in the center and then I will try to match it. With the corner. So now it's good because matching slab by slab, which is good for us. Now I can simply, you know, break apart these. We have slab and scale, we know. And if we have any window. This is here. And I'm gonna check just quickly. This have, it is arched, more arched than. Corner. But it's all up to us like how we want to. So it's like that. So we can keep it like that. Let's look at other ones quickly. If we have any window. Type of shape on any. This has square. So I will basically go with that one. This have this window, so we can follow this one basically. And. The chat is not updating, why? See it's. Wait, let me quickly. Get it here. So let me get back. Just give me a second. I am a child and I need to yes here. Yeah, perfect. Hello Sineh, welcome, welcome. You can't, can you share your username to love? Basically, I will have a look. Why you can't share your anything in there? Usually it should not happen. Yeah, so let's continue with this. It can have anything, but I'm mainly interested in the shape of the window. Basically, which we can make arch also, or we can make as a arc. Or we can make this corner shape whichever works for us. So. I will simply grab these two pages, try to bevel it. So now we can decide if we want arch or. Because corner is simpler, you can make it like that and just leave it. Um. I don't want to make it fully corner, but let's just go with it. And we have it here. And there is this setting, like correct face attribute and keep connected and. Now you have, like in Maya, you have preserve UVs. This is this work like that. Yeah, so now we have this. Simple like these faces. Simply, I'm. Okay. So now. This is a frame of it. We don't need to add cross in this one because in the front we can add, we can duplicate it. And duplicate this thing and add cross later on. So for now, I'm just trying to build. Just the structure. And just so you know what I'm doing, I will bring in this one. Keep it and. Select these two and I will say subdivide. And even these. So now it's like these faces. And there is a really nice tool called loop tools. You can make circle basically things bit circle. So we get some structure in here. Okay, so. Yeah, so we got this and I don't think we need to. We can make half. It's gonna take time shortly, so be with me. So it's, we're gonna add slowly, gonna add details more and more. And I think we can add segments here. It's individual right now. I wanna make that this arch basically. Not that complicated to make. Like these two. And this edge, I think needs to be here. Basically matching this. Like that. Suppose it's made like that, I can see it's flowing through that. And these are just a bit, little bit smoother. And now let's just make this. Also, and I'll bring this face down also. Because it's not that big. Don't worry about the topology at this point. Okay, and we can slowly. Make the shape, let me get this. Yes, so we got that rough. And this face I will bring forward. And we can do, you know, inset also. We'll bring the bottom. Because simply. Make it a separate mesh. Let's keep it joined. Insert it. Why? Because I want to make it diagonal basically inward. So it will be like more prominent to see. And this corner edge is totally fine. And I believe I need to. Bring this lower. Send it outwards. So yeah, this looks. Good. Okay, so yeah, so and these faces we can simply. Can go. Hide inside the sides basically. So from distance, my will be visible. Okay, and let's see the chat real quick. Okay, so. One log username is Yasin. Let me have a look real quick. I'll just tag you if I find it. Do you have your name in the titles? If you do, then wonderful. Miss search. I'm not able to search your name. Yeah, you are. Okay. You have the bootcamp, but. I was saying, so you know I showed you last time also, no? So how to? So how you grabbed it? Your. I know access the bootcamp session, but just in my case username is there. So you need, you can see bootcampers, you can go in there and create a new post basically. So then you can post in there, I don't know. So here. If I just show you. So in here you create a new post. So you see you don't have more much posts, so you come to bootcampers here. Right? And then create a new post. It should be like that, your name and the scene name basically. So we can have a cabin hunt and then you should be. Rusina, Tajini and whichever scene you are working, okay? So just name it, then put the concept along with it and just. Yeah, that's your post to post in the things basically. And feedback wasn't, okay, it's not feedback session, but it's okay. And let's see who else is there. What's your name? Okay. And. Hello Rodrigo, thank you very much, thank you very much for joining in. Let's continue. Yeah. And I will just change it so we don't go blind, but this maybe I will just. Go to layout and. So it's like this. And the same goes for this, like it's not visible because if usually when it's a straight surface, it will. Only be visible when there is a light falling on top of it, right? So we can do multiple things, like the same it is right now. I can add this and. Move these inwards. Uh maybe this. A bit more outward. And so then we have clearly have. What happened here? And yeah, so this will be the clear. Distinction between this thing if I show you here, the shading. Now you will be able to see it more. Clearly. And if you need more, and even this one, if you want to see, it's better to have a tapered. Basically. Just push it slightly outwards. Okay, grab X two, let's just. Now you see, so it's like it will be more visible from all the angles. So that's why we keep all the tapered, even in the baking, we keep it tapered. And yeah, that's auto smooth. Yeah, so it's good, it's good. We have window and let me bring it back. And it have some designs and stuff, so we can just forgive that for now. Make it little bit longer. Shallow. So we have here and the same, same goes for here, like it's not visible here. So you can either add bevel on this mesh. So it will start to be more visible. Or you can again do the taper thing here as well. And now let's get to this one. So if I come to. Now this one is this. Let me select this. Press Y to separate out this particular geometry. So when I select this one, it's like this. And we have correct face attribute selected. I'm just matching it with the planks. It's risky in the start, but it's okay. We can use a wooden texture without the planks. Which will work fine. Okay, now, what I'm doing is here you see, we have planks going in one direction. Right? And even these ones are in one direction. So what we need, I will select the alternate faces, press Y, so basically all the faces get. You know, separated. Now you can do individual reason. Rotate Z five, maybe ten. Yeah, and I will say extrude along normals. I'll do negative. And yeah, come here, you see. And this, another thing you can do, you can. I'm gonna do or remove the bevel from here. Let's remove these sides. Move slightly outwards. And what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna add level. So it's, there is something like in geometry, you say like clamp overlap. Right? So it because of some of the mesh can't handle. Because we're really close to. The edge, so that's why. And these ones. Select these faces. Link and I'm going to delete the top and bottom. I'm gonna select this one. Do we have? Yeah, we. Don't have anything at the bottom, but I want to add something at the bottom as well. So, but we might have to make. These smaller. So if you see. So we have. You know, yeah, and why it looked like this is because of the face orientation. Yeah, so it's easy fix, you select. Not flip, sorry. Recalculate outside, so it's gonna fix all this meshes. Come on, don't crash. It was not that heavy. Oh, we have this selected also. Accidentally. Now why this one? Now why this one? Some is expected, but too much is too much. Now. And as there is a hole in here on the corner, which is fine and. We can simply remove that. Let me see if we have everything smooth. In the shading you can harden normal also. Which helps with shading. But I could see there are gaps in here. Which is not good. I can reduce the. Angle also. Now it will stay. Move these also. Inside a bit. And this these all faces we can, you know. These all edges and vertices we can remove, we can just keep it here. So I can select all these vertex and remove them. Maybe we can keep a single one. And we can simply select. Keep this for just shading purposes, basically. The thing we have, there now that's how I look at it because this don't have these modifiers. Now we have. You know, detailed this thing. Now we need to just transfer all these details on other things like this one is that simply. Copy modifier, same stuff. We have some in there and and we need to cover up the corner with the. Where did it go? Cover up the corner with this. Round pillar. We can make it smaller, we don't need to make that big, so we can make smaller, so it's not an issue. And here is our permit. Yeah, now. So we cannot estimate. Okay, so let's continue and I will just try to replace this one. Yeah, so I will take alt D. And. Comes here. To see if it is on exact values. This one is not. Hmm, so now these two. So basically I was uh worrying about this gap. And now I'm gonna shift D X. Smash it here. Shift is duplicate and alt is link duplicator, if you don't know. What's the difference? And this one is like simple wall. So I can simply dissolve vertex or delete vertices. So simple. And. There is this one, I come and I delete the face. Uh where is it? Select that one as main and I'm gonna join that. So you see what happened, it just automatically took it and this one we need to work on. This is okay, but it's not good for us. And yes, as always, we select all the walls which are impacted by this. Select link of the modifiers. Now we have, and you can see in the material. Okay, how it is looking. Good. Hello designer, how how are you?
Oh, I'm just getting this.
Okay, so. Now. Let's continue. Right, so like that we we already have made a base, uh like that we can keep replacing things and keep adding things also. Now we need to, and even these tiles, if you want to keep it mesh like we have here, we can totally. Okay. We don't need to. I'm not that um Jumetanor savvy to basically give it simply. Same thing. So I will add another one and we have. So simply I'm gonna. Here we need to have that plank. And that's why I was saying like I was planning to merge all this because uh how it is handled. In other places. They have these pillars in the corners, but those pillars will not go here. So logically it continues in the front, this will cover it up. So that make more sense in here. You see they have this design. Which cover up the front. And yeah, so this kind of will give us another one, a tiny one. To cover that up. You know what I mean? Uh so basically you see this one, so we can not replicate that type of detail here. And similarly we have some smaller and we have the window type of design here, like same window but larger. In here, so that will be like we have another one. Exclusion from here and it place here to. You know, match it. It turns basically, we will not have this weird shape in here. Yeah, so that's a. That's improvised we can make also. So but let's continue with the shape. Uh replacement for now. So there is a two window one, again alt D. Shift Z and now bring it here, is it not? Grid is there and there is absolute grid. Okay, well no worries. What is that? Ninety. Okay, so now we have. The thing, same thing we're gonna do, we're gonna select this one, shift D. And just gonna place at the that place. And now we have these two faces. Select these faces, last click these faces. So we don't remain anything. So just bring it to the center of that and shift D. Good. And median. Scale X zero. Okay, and this is how that is good overall and but. And. Select this one, join, same thing. It replaced on all of the stuff. But you can link modifiers and basically we have to do on all this. Different one which are getting replaced. And so they look crisp, see? I know this like still modular, right, but uh I'm I'm still thinking this will be much better without the modular stuff, but we'll see how it goes. Okay, so.
Designer, I'm doing good, I'm doing good. Uh. First I heard what are you doing? First I read you, that's what you said. Um uh that's what I'm making stuff. I'm trying to because. Uh what I was thinking basically, uh why I decided to do it now and daily, basically I'm trying to do it daily now. Because I thought of it like it will go till twelve weeks basically. But I'm only spending time when I'm doing the live stream. So I thought I should do more live streams or work more on it. Otherwise this will just keep going on for months and we'll never finish it. And I really want to finish some stuff out and every session there are some unfinished things which just stay unfinished. And it's like a bunch of unfinished stuff. So I'm just focusing on this for now, so I'm detailing this up. Like bridge we already have on good stage uh in there, so I'm gonna polish the environment, then I'm gonna polish everything up again. Uh basically we have these two mirror props, another one are there. And there is uh one another detail I found uh in the thing which we can add in our. Scene also to decorate the side of it, like we have this stone wall surrounding it, that's perfect. And then we have these gravestones. Yeah, which are also awesome. No, it's not awesome, but it's a nice detail. Like this, see? So there is this floor path which can definitely add stones, the slabs and this stone wall surrounding it. And then we can make on the other side. So if I don't have my scene open right now, but and like here is more clearly visible. Like this is a stone pavement to walk around and then we have some, you know. Graves around the church because we have some open area in the front uh of the other side of river also. On the other side, on the backside of it also. And. Uh. Yeah, so this is overall in there. So yeah, this is what I was saying like basically like turning it like rather than having it flat, just bring it front and then we can add this. This detail, tiny hut type thing in the front. I think it will be nice to add. And there is this tiny one also which you again, and this whole thing can be this dragon scale. And we have the thing also which is good. We can keep this mesh also. Even if we don't want to make the material, we can keep it mesh and yeah. We can just simply put tile belt textures on top of it after unwrapping that tiny piece which we are putting. Uh I can show how we can do it simply oh using uh Jumetan nodes. But I don't know how we're gonna get it to grids and then map it, but I believe we can boolean and do stuff. But this is good and this corner one I would love to have this like this. Basically these uh stone tiles only. Which good. Love the details. And then we have this dragon. Dragon tongue also. And and also as showed yesterday, like we have a bunch of sketch fab stuff, I would gladly use those. Wherever I need or because that gonna be make our workflow fast, definitely. So let's try to make that frontal. That's part, yeah, let's try making this. No, this was not in before and also in the back we are making this round and we are making our life. Better, better. So let's go. Hmm, this one will just move. Oh, come on. Okay, it have I think the mapping projection, I think, no. Why it's taking so long to move then? That's similar UV project, yeah. See, it have UV projection. So let me remove it or maybe I should have applied it. That's okay. Anyway, it's good, right? So now it will be easy to move. Let's see, this one don't have. So good, we can now move. Come on, whatever. Designer said that's good, nice progress. I'm making small break at the moment. Yeah, no worries. Take your time, no stress. Taking enough rest is good. You know, burn out and you stay motivated. I'm also motivator after a long time, so I'm just having fun. So we'll try the Jumetan node thing also soon. Less. So uh select this one. I'll say alt D. So we get this and then we can just turn it inwards. Well, this is uh. Because. Vertex is. Sure, all D. Hmm, it's not aligning, hmm, that's weird. Yeah, this one is not. Now it is. Yeah, not all of them are. Aligning basically, so we need to. Ah, too much. So basically if it would have been one mesh, would have been simply. Yeah, oh let's just continue it's. Now it comes here and to this one we can. Move in the front. Like unlike it's matching and then we can add another one. So this one need to be unique, I believe. And if I. Yeah, thus on here and we can. Basically mirror it on the other side. Like if you want to. Mirror object this one. Going beyond inside. But it's a rough representation, we'll replace it. So this one. If we don't. Do we have another one? I would say like I won't make, I'll make a tiny one. That one is enough. I will, how much it is? Four hundred. So which, oh, we already have this window here, so this is like window, single window one. Could be this, no? Link, let me try. Object data, yes. So it match with that. So link modifiers. So now we have the same. Window mesh here, but I really love that tiny one. Hmm, yeah, this tiny thingy. It's so cute. For this we can add, we can extend it, we can make a unique piece and maybe make all the scales up here. Or maybe we can move this till here and I can, you know, break this. Let me just quickly do that only. So we can select all these. Move up. This uh unique piece we can make it as we want. Let it go beyond the limits if it's going and. Roughly match the lines. Right? Here. And. And. And scale by three. That's not perfect. It's a good workaround. Yeah, this roof will fix. And so we get basically the bigger one. Right, a unique piece. That's like it's happened like a long time back, we worked on a project and then we were making modular stuff. And then we used. So these are called unique pieces in the modular one which have this special touch. But then we had so many of these unique pieces and it just kept getting out of hand. Uh so quickly, so many unique pieces basically. Uh rather than this one, if we can use this one also, so. Right, so this one is matching perfectly. Yes, just going in. If you're making interior, then we have to fix this thing also and maybe make a. Maybe use this piece with, let me try. Let's work. All D. Yeah, here. Okay, now we need to. Maybe move this more further. Or we can maybe just make another piece which is smaller. Yeah, let's just keep it here for now. And we link copy modifiers, so we have it on the other side also. Or just simply. Another side. And this piece is linked, but it is a unique piece for the. Frontal crown, which we need to fix. And definitely, I will take auto shift. We will just take. Just these pieces. Now says shift D. So this one is separate mesh. I'll show you what I'm doing, I'm trying to make basically. You know. Not cheat, but. Basically large shape because I remember we have it here. See, it's going like that, it's. Bit uh not like that, but. So now we have these. And it's like sharper also, like this roof are not as diagonal as need to be. Which will be a lot of work if we need to fix those. But we can keep it here. Roughly below that. Cover our thing. It's here, and where is our door piece, this is the one. Select this one and join. So remove these. So now we have actually the position. We can move it here. And basically that's what I was saying, like it's the diagonal taper of our roof is not exactly. As per that, and we are making an arbitrary, so we'll not stress that much. And it's ours. It's our seat, so we can do whatever we want. Um this is. Only two pieces are here, so I will just remove this. Face, yeah. And we can roughly match it to this as well. Link materials, sorry modifiers. And we can technically skip this roof and we can just adjust with that one only. But if you want to match the angle, we can just match the angle of this one. Because we already made it unique now. Yeah, we can simply. Match the. Angle. We have roof. Or maybe let's keep it like this. Okay, and. And these can be round pillars, these ones. We have actually it's working. Where is the reference? Yeah, here. Here is fine. Or just fix values. Okay, see, so we have. Endless, and so this this face will be gone. And we can simply duplicate this one to make inner face also. So shift D. Yeah. Let me keep the face. I think I did, I should have kept the face of. Size of that. Is a unique piece. Still I want to keep the. Walls. At least walls we can match to the grid, no? And this corner will be gone and it it's a unique piece, so it will be matching the roof. And we were making the other side of the roof will be awesome. And these ones. Let's delete these ones. I'll make the pillar and we'll replace it with the pillars. Anyway, yeah. So. So this one is. Cursor to selected cursor compared to, let's check. Cube. Scale shift Z point two. So this is roughly larger. This is the human height. So if you want to keep this one smaller, the door basically, we can. It aligns, so basically it is like two meter door. And this basically arch can be here, just close. Okay, and we can simply remove. If you want to simplify things, we can. Right, and then you can, we can add that door. So yes, for this this one we can leave the face, so we have a door inside. And then it doesn't matter what is here. And this is fighting with this one. Yes, now we have. Those interfaces gonna not gonna trouble us, but if we're gonna cover this with this. Then it doesn't matter what we have there, so we can just simply skip those and keep the dragon scale. Throughout from the roof corner to the top. Okay, so this is good. Love it how it's coming. Let's let's make the uh. The pillars. So we have it here and we say on cylinder. Let's make it twelve. And we have three hundred. Now if I. Yeah, you see, like that. We can place now on all the corner to cover it up. Just to see if it fit in here. We can either extend the wall. To give it solid in there or we saw it have this thicker one. Two. So what we can do. It's here, select this, scale Z point seven. Yeah, will work. Smooth, move it down. This or this piece uh we can simply link. Yeah, it's good bevel. And on the top how it is. This one is perfect, like it's the same as the window, it's so perfect. You see here, it's like the tiny version of that, love it. And the these ones, we can hardly see how those might be. From the. The bottom, let me make it bigger. I believe if it's like this from here at least somewhere. It should be a little bit supportive on the top or this like just simply. Here just going simply cylindrical. So it could be like that also. So now if from here you have simply you can say Alt D. And you can simply start placing in the corner. And yeah, so whenever you feel like you want to scale it up, you can scale it up. This can help us cover up these corners also, like if you feel like we're here, we need to. Like that. So this is a normal in the modular stuff also, like if you want to cover up some stuff. You can cover up your mistakes with this also. Like if your modular stuff is not fully matching the thing. Yeah, by values it's coming perfectly here, so I will just keep it. Select the all T. Here. And do we need more? And just like these, there are bigger one, we don't need to make the bigger ones. But we can definitely place a wall here, maybe the flat one or maybe with the window. It's not perfectly, so we might have to move these. Move fifty. And. So we match the corners. So this is covered from the side. And as we have this, I think, yeah, we need to either make the smaller one. Which I realize is we have roof here, so we need to. Basically cover it up for like this. And this plain one will be fine here. So you can select, delete and. Yeah, so the normal wooden one is fine. And yeah, we don't, if you don't have smaller one, like the half, we can simply make it from here. So it's, yeah, it's getting. More and more detailed. And we can use the same pieces everywhere and I will. Do we have half bit here somewhere? Or I can simply do this and just get away with it. Because we have. All these. Right, like fifty centimeter we can keep it behind intentionally. So we covered this wall and the same goes for. Store is fine and I think these will be on the other side. Done. Okay, like that one by one. I'm still uh duplicating with instance. So. Would have trouble and we don't have here unless we are player, we want our player to go closer. Then we have to make the other side. Which we can mirror also. Like what if I mirror and apply on the other side, I think it will be fine. Roughly, right? Um that will keep building itself. Oh, this one have, okay. Okay, let me save before we lose all our work. And. This don't have. Why does it take too long to? Still this designate displacement should not. Let it. What this one have, will you project? And so. Small one here. And just. Just need to. Make maybe this step longer. And so it's on the value and it's matching the thing also. It's coming on the floor we can make another mesh simply and this as it was a unique piece. So get this start to look. Is this. It's unique so. As this is one. It's not needed basically we can have simple strip of roof only. But I want to separate this out. Which is this piece. We don't want to make it larger. So it's prominently visible and it's going a bit higher. This one was a this is also a nice idea we can add a. With a cross or just keep this one also I add another one on top here as well. And we need to be have. Variation and tower. There is this which is nice. Mm hmm okay. So now we have uh roughly. Okay this one we need just a small one. Which is fine. We can definitely take the all the stuff on the other side as well. This is cool. There is nothing on the other side oh it was not in the center also no no. Link modifiers. It's crispy crispy. Select these. Only rotate said. And. I believe we can have the pillars. This is going up we can have a different type of pillars without basically those uh with the scales. That's totally fine if we I'm gonna do shift D. And. I scale over point seven so it just become like this. I know I shouldn't do it but. It's mine. So. I believe we can get everything. Done here now it just matter of we replace things in there. See I'm now I'm just going to get a bit lazy now. So. So here uh I remember just there is this. It's downloadable also. The dragon thingy good. For us we can use it somewhere but we click downloadable. And I remember there was. Put the Sata with church. We had the whole thing yeah here this one. There was one with interior also yesterday I saw. Not this one that was with one with the interior. I think it was not a downloadable I think. Yeah this one. So this we can uh look at this as like how it is from here. Right so how the structure is from inside so we can make these roof structures in there. This one is good. As this is also mesh we can you know simply add the mesh. And as we are going this I love this one because this one I wanted. How is it in there so simple. Let's just see if we have. Think this is all these are all scans this might not be that useful. But basically if you have this you can trace it basically. You can place raise the model this good to if you're struggling to make the shapes oh this is just a point cloud. Okay. Nobody. Let's just to go here. Remove this. Where did you go interior. And I use that as reference. Just keeping the side. This is quickly make. This is just simply. So I will not worry too much about the design what they have inside this thing uh because this can be polished definitely. Let's make this head more hairy. And just need to add an eye here. Let's make. So it's just we just gonna make it solidify. Simple stuff we have. Scale so just make it. Ten good. Or smooth. And save. Bevel. Um. Okay nope so and we gonna put it at the bottom you have a rotation apply put it at the bottom. And you can change only change from here or simply. Can't be so I'll select origins. Right here. Center. Locked. Okay it it will not work with exact value but here here. So we can if we want to scale it slightly we can. So if we want to also want to make it thicker we can. Alt T see. Here we'll add a cross. Maybe we'll add in the corners here. Let's see how many places we have it. There are crosses. Or. On the tower also there is so. I'll add. In the corners and we'll have on the both side also. Perfect it's sitting on top of the the column. So now we have a bunch of stuff so now we can take it to under I believe we can from this side only. We know because the background might not be visible so we just keep it on this side. So let me just try putting a mirror on this. So this is not uh. Fitting right so I'm gonna just play with it a little so we can fake that. Of course gonna. Cry. And simply. Yeah so we have it. Bring this one forward. What does it change. Just closing it so we don't have anything right so this could overall. Now I show you how we can simply take everything in there. So this one is. Inside the church right here. I can simply delete it and select everything. Which I want to export these I don't want to because these are the modular pieces so what we can do we can say. Um is it under a collection no yeah. School and we can say okay um. And church. Moduls. Okay, so these one we don't need. Rest we can simply. Move. To the center if we can best our. Ability roughly. But I can. Select the centerpiece. Which one is that the great I think nothing is that the great. Let's like this one this is also not a big grid let's like this one. Even if it is bound it doesn't matter. Oh, I am. Don't have okay uh I will do this value. Grab X fourteen point seven three. Grab X fourteen point seven. Based on this value so it's almost zero it's still not at the center but it's okay this will be fine. Let's select this one or we have a small wall here. Okay, so I can. Let me take this one. Similar to add to modules. We just need simply half of it in here. One we can. Slightly moving. Like this one. Okay. Whatever. Oops. Only copy modifiers now I do. It's here nice. Okay, so as we have most of the things this we don't have decimate so. And we can link copy modifiers. And I'll select all these and select this link. Object data. Uh now we have almost. One thing not almost not everything I will test out the scales and everything definitely. I'm just going to show you how you can export everything in there. So now all these pieces which are remaining now. Basically I will. Move maybe hide this one. Yeah. And select everything now we have everything. We just want to. You know, paint pa- parent everything so control P parent to object keep transform. Let it cry now. I hope it don't destroy the placement should work technically because everything is moving in here now. Okay, the only thing is because everything is in the same. Collection. Now I have to move this also should have moved this there so let's just give in there let's look at the chat while. It just think. Okay, so. Uh designer uh like that's good nice yeah so. Um. No, we already answer and the Husini asked the displacement technique look really crucial first one. Yeah, it's it's for all the organic shapes basically you can get stuff it's not the correct way but it's the fast way basically. When you don't have to uh even like the the stones which I showed you we can simply do them also in the same way. Okay, so now we have here you see this is not linked so basically I need to move it to the church now this will be. In there. Now we have this and you can see all churches linked to this one. And we already have uh this is set up to export in the folder. And of just this save and I'm gonna just um. This everything is not on place so. I expected this. So. Yep, it's here. Yeah, so we showcase the busy the support. Good. This we can replace again with the full scale and then we can add a window here. And the same like the window here window here and that's all the scales in there. Maybe we can have a double window piece in here and this window piece here uh it's all our now so we can be. We can use it as we want. Um one more thing I wanna quickly do. We have a. We don't have a flat face no it's okay leave it there I was planning to put something in here as a placeholder. It's okay uh we can select this one don't have any values anything which is good. Everything center two zero is already in the center and we say export. Okay, while it's exporting I know it's gonna cry but there's a lot of thing too big. Husina said I don't know if it's relevant for the stream but my main goal is to become an artist or not at all. So if you have any advice to take it thank you for sorry for autosuggest. Husina high five I also want to. What's next is in America it's difficult to get visa but if you're open we can have a call together. And I can answer questions these like this I have already answered but this is a really interesting question. Um if you're open to. Open for a call right it will be recorded but I can cut in the parts from it. But if you're open for it I would love to do a call and you can ask me anything anything career related. What precisely you want to make for the portfolio and I think you can check other videos are there like we want to see. Example how it will be it is so much fun to chat basically so let me know if you're open for that. Okay, so we'll know a little bit more about you uh what your journey is and then we're gonna plan your next journey in the game. So yeah. See yep here. But like if I give you caveat basically for that uh is basically the portfolio. Yeah, I'm I'm up for it like you should if you're open I love talking to talented artists like a passionate people artist. Who want to do something so um message I will send you link message me on LinkedIn if you know uh my personal LinkedIn you can send me message there. Uh I will just let me let's send you my LinkedIn. If anyone also want to add me you can add me send me a DM. Uh like you're interested in the call I will send you also a link to book a call. So after that just keep your questions and portfolio ready and we can just jump in home and that's taking time. Oh let me open up on your blender we're gonna try the scales thing you know. That will be fun this is another fun stuff they have done this is they made a game in Godot and. So if you have a plane. And I take a cube. Yeah, this. So we have this piece and we gonna put it on top of it. Hmm to to make it normal let me fire up. Until also. So if I just simply say okay uh you can create a plane inside here also but we take geometry and we say sample. Uh points on face points. On instance on point dot point on. Vertexes distribute points on faces. Put it here I'm gonna give you these points yeah. So then you can say okay instance on points. And then it's like what you want to install so I'm gonna take this. Thing and you can say okay this geometry I want to instance as pretty huge and I would say apply scale. I see we have this this the only thing is this is a bit random. That I need to still. Figure out. Yeah, so you can increase the density like that and then you can say okay. Like that. It's still a bit random. Okay, but if if it's a quick thing it it works basically. Oh come on epic launcher how can you be so slow. Did we get our charge exported yes. Now it's here right so it's like simply two nodes. And now uh what we can do we can select mesh cone let's try on this. How it looks. And smooth and I'll select and I can link copy modify same thing. You see it just went preserve now uh there is the this thing uh you have rotation. You plug into rotation and you get. Something like this. Yeah, it match with the normal of the mesh and you get this. I believe this looks pretty fine right. I think we can do it it's like just to click and just even though it is random but it's gonna add a lot of detail in our scene anyway. Let me see if I'm sharing the screen right yeah you can see it it's fun. And now uh let me try another thing and I'm gonna make a cube. Scale point five. Okay, and I'm going to lead these. Pieces. With this also. Last try. Copy but first. Nice. The corner is the only thing. But at least surface we got. And. It's it's not very very geometric. But actually I loving it more than geometric and now we can do. There is this only one thing which I could not figure out because this rotation if I want to randomize. There is a transform is there right you can transform geometry. Right uh and they used to be like for example like for scale you can overall scale up and down. But if you want a random thing so you can take a random value. Or you can simply plug this one also like I was moving point nine to point one you can plug this in I believe. It randomly uniformly scale and you can say okay one point different values. This one like if I create try to say random. Okay, hmm there is. So this transform is separate transform but like if you see like if I try to take like again the float value. If I try to put it in rotation. It worked what. Uh let me take vector. Oh damn, it worked. Now if I say vector math. I take yeah this one is like diamond shape but this is not diamond shape this one gives a trouble. So if I combine these two I say add or multiply let's say multiply. Uh or just if there is anything. Let us add only okay and then we say a rotation and we make it one. Uh now this should technically. Oh this is uh we let me to multiply. So now it is. Around this. So minimum is point nine. And this one is one point one so do we have. One randomization on our tiles. And to uh for the edge hmm. I don't know how we can separate just these. Vertical edges if we can somehow separate them out uh in here. Then we can you know exclude and create that corner piece also but overall I will say. This is fine for now because what we were sending in there is totally fine, this this experiment is totally success. So this is exported, so as we already have this, I'm gonna, damn, a lot of stuff. Remove. Okay, this tiny piece. Okay, and now we have everything uh in here. So because this one have uh. Maybe I will have a solidify modifier also. So now we have solidify. But still I have a geometry, so that might not work in this. So I will just simply duplicate and remove the solidify. On this, I will add. Geometry nodes, new. Like I would wanna do the same thing, we have geometry, we say uh distribute points on faces. Okay, so we have it here. And we don't need to see here. And then we say instance on points. This is the one. Where is it? Here. Yeah, this is the one. And. Take it and instance. Now we got this one and we know rotation to rotation. We got that and we can simply rotate. My rotation. To match it, yeah, and let me just quickly uh polish our. This tiny thing. Scale. Bit bigger, maybe we can. Slide, yeah, so this is good. Good. And less. It's coming and as we have portion this and we say nine and. Hmm basically have too much density. I think you can reduce it here. Let's do this full. So it's so good overall. And we got bunch of stuff. And I think there are faces on the back which it is. Yeah, on this, this we don't need. And yeah, we can increase the scale. So for this, I will say random scale, random value. And we can say, okay, point nine to one point two. Put in the scale, yeah, we got some random scale in here. And one more thing I'm gonna do. Like in God of War, it's a. It's like this. So just making it like this, just just see how it looks. And so we get much better. Let's keep it. And also add randomness. And vector math. Vector. Let's make it simply multiply with this rotation. Basically, this rotation is different, you cannot plug this uh basically have, but maybe that was a bug. So. Minus point one. Point one is too small, no? Point one. Should I to add? Yep, add is better. Now we just like plus minus basically, like some inward, some outward, basically, good stuff. And I think uh sheet of light is not there. I'm just thinking why those are turning like this on the back. Oh, there is a base. Perfect, so we have this and we need to basically unwrap that one so it will work. And this scale is here and I'm gonna make it one point five to maybe. One point eight to two point two, so we can have basically larger tiles. It might look bit stylized. Hmm, this is better, now we just need to apply it on all the meshes. We'll select all of them and we'll save before. Not this one, let's let let's just select it, see what happens, no, this one, I know what gonna happen. I just select the these meshes, select in the end this one and link. Uh not link because not everything have mirror, let's just do it. Copy modifiers. And then remove this one, select this one, remove the mirror, link, copy modifiers. Hmm, this one has scale, right? So you, okay, this one uh. Is instance, but have a scale value which is making it look like this. Yeah, so we can simply apply scale. And I think rotation is also messed up on these. So. Let's just apply rotation also. Yes, we get something. And one thing I want to test here, now they are like going in the both end. So what if uh we, these faces we don't need? What if I simply make it smoother? Basically, there is uh if I, we cannot add it, let's see if we can edit. This is vertex normal. So we have it and we can't edit, but. Hmm. We have smooth vertices. Smooth. This, we can shade smooth. And somehow if we can turn the. Do we have normal edit tool? Oriental. I don't know, so I was thinking like if we can make it smooth because basically we can add. White is unable to level. Hmm, that's why. Select. And but distance. Now see, yeah, it is in there. So we say share smooth. Alt N. Smooth vectors, alt N. Face area, see, perfect. This is what I wanted to see if I can do. Perfect, achieved. So now we have some round without playing with it too much, so similar thing we can do. Here, vertex merge by distance. Select alt N average face area and we have beautiful looking. Hmm, tiles. And this one is fine. And for this, I, why didn't I do it? Because the, you know, it's a whole mesh, you're gonna put it on everything. So it's better we break it up. So we select the face, let me say shifting Z slightly. Yeah, and also I think we can give attributes also. So in the mesh, you can create vertex group and you can make attribute here. This position, shaft is uh. And you can select, let's let's try, I I I'm not really really expert on this, but let's try. And there is attribute and we call it uh. This is for, uh maybe we call it scales, okay, scales. Copy hmm, vertex or we say face. And we say is uh not an integer, it's a Boolean. Add, yeah, and let's try. Yeah, so now it's adding on everything, but if we can the. Attribute. Or. Name that it is there. It's a store, okay, wait, let's see. It do not have, but. See if we say. No, uh it uh it do not work on this. Uh what we can do, select this one, remove this, now let's see. I don't know, it does not work, let's see, yeah. We have. Kills. Yeah, see again, I I will check how we can do this, but let's not. Go too much crazy on it. Select the faces, shift the Z slightly up. Separate it out on this, remove it, select these faces, turn it on. And it have rotation and everything, so you assign it, so we got this. And what I'm gonna do is to make our life easy. Select the edges. Can just move it there. So I'm gonna do shifty rotates at ninety. Okay, look at that craziness. Uh we can do the same thing there also, but everything is there, I'm gonna just quickly export now. I think we have it and this is like this look too stylized also, so I'm gonna. Let's just, yes, export this again. No. Save, export, it will take some time, let's see if someone have any message. Yeah, also now thank you very much for sending request, we will have it, um I will accept it soon after the session, so. Skin is gonna run the unreal. And you. I'm ready. Okay, hmm, where is the project? Is this the one? So we have uh. Musine asked, do you already have used the Substance Designer for the baking, for some props? I think powerful tool for hard surface. Um Substance Designer, I use the for some same similar like whatever we did with the Juvetti nodes. Some procedural stuff, basically, like we have things which we need to sort out. Uh I I know that painter can also do the same thing for props, painter is best. But you can do the thing in designer also. Uh but mostly like when we have scrubbed to make textures, like most mostly when we need to make tileable textures, then uh. Then only I have uh used Substance Designer, uh not for props. I don't think so, but remember. Uh specifically. Uh Rodrigo, I'm sorry if quite. Uh it's okay, it's okay, Rodrigo, how it's supposed to be, I didn't. Uh if anyone have question, they can ask, I wanted to focus also on the things. And building hypothesis, that's perfect, awesomely awesome. Uh if you're stuck, still stuck on uh textures, then let me know, okay? And also here is hyper is the best uh section, just here. Hmm, I don't understand. Yes, sir, okay, okay, okay. Yeah, so yes, let me, okay, here's our scene. Didn't update again, I need to, but again like on the this thing like we. We're gonna make a rock and do the whole pipeline and I owe to a lot of people. So let's just bring this church and just say, is it exported already? It's still exporting, so we re-export. Is it exported already? It's still exporting, so we re-export. From here, let's just crash it. Look at that. Can you see it? Open the eyes. Uh yeah, so this is good. And here this is the back of it. I can simply keep it like this also maybe. Fitting the fitting, okay? And we have uh areas around it which we can fit in. Do you see? It took I think from the because the material is already there with the name. It took it from there. The other one don't, so we it didn't. See this, it's uh here, so let me open it up in editor. So stupid, like why, why, why it don't work now? In only four it was perfect. Hmm. This is a wall. Um. Just just assigning something, so we have it. I don't know if it's the same, it's not the same, but let let me just assign it there. So we have it. And textures, we only have these two. Well, let me, why it did not work here? Scales, okay, because we have it here. So. Not here. There's a roof, we need different one, but the rest is fine. This we did not unwrap properly, so it's our fault. But overall you see we have details. Look at this also. Because we didn't unwrap that also. And this looks cool. Other side we do not make. Let me quickly import the. Out content browser this and we have. The church textures. Hmm text, um church textures. Roof tiles. Renameing the. We don't have the other one, so we just let me just import this one. Another one we can keep the same because we don't have it. I don't want to put it there and because. You're gonna go nuts, but looks fine only. Let's keep this one. For now. Okay, and we have it here. Perfecto. Yeah, this is the gap we need to improve in there. Is it exported or not? Ooh. What just happened here? What happened here? So let's try one more thing, realize instances. So if I apply on this. Let's see what happens. Control A. I should not apply. So apply all. Looks like simple mesh. Apply all. Good. This one don't. I think it's the because the instance. Let's try now again. Okay, so meanwhile we are here, I'm gonna just play. And this, I hate this mesh. I think maybe I should just delete this one. I don't need to keep it anymore. And save. Current level as. We can work on this bridge next. This is only, oh look at this ugliness. Yep. You're coming along, coming along. And if we like these windows are too much, we can reduce them as well. We can keep a single window one at the top. We can definitely. I would definitely we did not do anything on the back. Whatever. Yeah, it gonna take time. Who was sharing? Yeah. Okay. Let's see if someone have question. I gotta take it. That's wonderful. So uh I believe uh we had a. Long one today, yeah. So. So we can simply. Yeah, polish it further. Fix the UV, make the unique meshes and maybe textures. And fix the things like this. Maybe move the, make the wall thicker. To give it more support and import the proper proper one texture for this. And try to see how we can bake the details in here to map it better. Maybe we don't need the planks. Because what we can do, uh the top uh thing. One thing which is not correct here, it can see clearly. And let me just open up pencil. Basically the window should be matching the planks. So this is uh. This is basically odd that is in between the logs. So we can have maybe big window between these three planks. Yep, so let me uh stop this, I'm not sure. So basically uh basically delete everything. Rather than we can have one. Big window here. Okay, and. Because it it should be uh touching the planks. And these planks also we can simply make cube and then bevel simply, right? And and we can also add some subdivisions and slightly uh. You know, have displacement. So it will have a variation in the. Mesh is not an issue uh with nanites and even with the latest consoles. And we can use some texture without these lines. Then we can map it on everything. And even on here. We can make a sculpt and then decimate it to the hyper image. And just simply use that and maybe uh tomorrow is the feedback session basically. I will continue with this. And I will give feedback also on your progress. So just. Look at those dragons, nice. With crosses we need to add. Did export. Yes, okay. Let's look at it with the scales. I hope it look crisp. You just scare me once it go vanish. Oh, look at that. It just in, oh, we forgot to add here. Ah, oh shit. We missed the opportunity to add it on the crowd. Uh let's see why it is assigning the. This we can't change because we had to assign it in here. That is my mistake. We should have uh we can have. Roof scales and also this have already roof scale. And I'm gonna select and link. Copy modifiers now we have. And this how I think is scaled, I believe. Yes. Scale, perfect. I'd have tiles. And these walls we can simply make in there. And as what was remaining. It should all normal. We can make a beautiful one also later on. For now, I'm just gonna use. This one only. Wall foot. Nice. Good and save. Layout and. It's really heavy, I believe. That's how many? Yes. If I select all these. Isolate is five hundred thousand. I think the most of the faces are coming from the scales. That is the only heavies. I think these ones are six thousand. These are the one. Basically fourteen thousand. Look at this one. It's uh one hundred and thirty thousand polygons on this. Is uh let's look at the wireframe a bit. Yeah, it have a bevel with the two segments. We can simply reduce one. And we just half the polygon C. So it must might be little bit better and we can reduce more by simply. Cutting these into half. So now we have more or less, forty three thousand, like five times less polygons now. Save. And let's try. Last time exporting it. And if you guys have any question. Okay, while we import. Oh, see the, it almost looks good. Nice. Thank you, thank you. Oh. It's a long journey. It's the seventh week and we still need to go a long way. Um if we are not able to make the larger scene, we gonna focus on just the. Arounding the church part. Maybe we'll polish the church and bridge maybe. And improve the stuff. There's a lot of stuff we need to still do. And if I just show you in here, basically. There there should be rocks and cliffs, much more better blending. For now, this looks generic. And as I said, we can have stone wall here. Maybe we can make this as a ground for burial. I have uh. You know. Graves around it and this area we can also have walls and stuff like that. So it will be fun, small area and we can complete this. And add basically detail, the corner details and everything. Yeah, um what else we have? This one are thicker. Maybe there is a scale issue here. Yeah, this we need to apply the scale because see these are thin, these are not. That means there's scale issue. And. Yeah, I also love that. So this is how it is. Currently the other side is not there, so that's why it look odd. But like yeah, this like this it's much better because how it. Basically on the highlight it was basically based on. So we can keep it like this. Yeah, so this highlight, basically you see the door and the roof and everything. And the shadow is, that's what we wanted to achieve. And also this this gradual thing we want to achieve also, no? So. A lot of stuff, a lot of stuff. And even in the concept art, if you see, uh there is. This water was is good. Basically, so see this fidelity here, something like that. We can add some moles and other stuff. It's good, this is good environment. Hmm. It's thirty, I think. So this is the something we can try to achieve. And if we even look at the concept art, there is like rapid waters. I wonder if I can uh manually model this. And we can make some texture, vertex blending. And we can make this foam and everything. We can make it look more closer to this. No uh VFX and this detailed material is not my expertise, but it will be fun, you know? Something is there and and even here is like rapid waters are here, yeah also. Yeah. Here it was like much calmer. It's nothing happening. But this was fun. And even the rocks have this moss. Which we can achieve if we look at on the graves. Yeah, they have this stone and moss, these, lichen and everything. So that we can add in the in the material, so they can grow. And then add in detail, I'll 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 just model some shapes and everything and I'll have tileable textures on top. And just blend. And just blend basically. What does blend we add some moss some leachin we can grow we can use P C G to grow some leachin and stuff like that on top of it. Uh but overall I want to give the same here let's see there's some moss and everything it should be fun. Like this if we can have a shot like this also it will be fun no. Yeah it exported perfect let's see if we can find. We have trees here. Yeah so like that. Something similar once it's complete from this side also we can have you know like that. More shots it takes time we need to be patience and. I hope the texture comes right. Perfect look at the crispiness. Hmm love it love it. Not visible too much from here let's look at from camera. Hmm for camera it is a bit odd. Wait let me show you one thing uh found I have opened it from a long time wanted to show you guys last time also. And. I might not be able to find it now. So many tabs. Just give me a second. Of web dot com. And we have. Composition. And this one. As here yeah so this one is the coolest on my library I believe already. So let me see how does this work and. Yes comment add to project and. Okay so basically um I don't know how it works. Yep so let's see. Uh content browser. Composition lines B P. In the scene is bound. And we got the line see perfect to match the composition. And I will send you this one it's free also so you guys can have fun as well. Here go crazy so what's happening here is uh we can change the composition but by rule of third. We can you know uh make and I cannot change the camera right now because I have locked it. If I edit uh transform unlock. So now we can simply move the lines. So now see this line is matching my church and this line is matching my bridge. And I can slightly move it here also so my. Church and this aligns perfectly. Yeah so now we know this path is coming over the bridge. And sometimes we we if we are having uh focusing on the terrain we say keep two part landscape. And like that like we keep ar- around this line around horizon or if you want. In the middle we keep our this line around horizon but I will keep it in the middle. Right and like because this this is good also. Because mountains are not the focus this one is the focus so we can keep it around roughly here and then I can. Simply. Lock the movement again and in our where is the blueprint. And we can move it to lighting here. Right so we've quickly fixed the things uh we can get out of this one. And I think we can still T more like imagine we were uh planning to add something. From within the trees right if we want to showcase something like that. Move from here here so some close up and then we can turn on and we can see how we can. I keep it around the line so root of the we can keep it in the middle or more focus in here. And it's roughly just a filler and we got a nice composition in here. There are more I think we can. Right even even if you see this one if you don't have anything it's but you can like this golden one. Right the this thing so imagine uh we get back to our camera you see. Even if you see the golden I I wish I could we could flip this. Uh flip it somehow I if I could take this like this but you have it here. So that your focal point should come here so you lead your eyes but for me it is uh. See here now you understand this was my goal from start. Like ask her from I start from here and then go here simply that was the goal. See so it's there are so many crazy stuff. Yeah so yeah this is uh if you useful use it and I believe. This is it for today's session uh if you have any question you can ask me now. That is it okay. Yeah uh you're welcome Hosine uh if you have any question you can ask me now and otherwise I will. Just take my leave and we will meet tomorrow tomorrow the feedback session I will make a channel where you can post your stuff. And we will meet there okay. Yeah I'm glad you enjoyed Hosine uh if anyone don't have question I'm glad uh just before leaving as you already know. The drill uh do uh if someone can do the timestamp of this video kindly do it. Uh and if you can watch some videos watch other videos we have art talks and. Some tutorials from previous the first bootcamp basically kind of which I read. I'm editing it and posting it again so if you can watch that will be really great that gonna give me a little bit boost that people are watching the videos. Uh I don't uh post it enough on LinkedIn or on Discord but. You guys are awesome you're watching and if you can watch more would really really help me. And do your suggest like what you want to learn I'm planning to make a basic tool. Videos basically for speed tree plant factory and other tree related tools which we have how to make in blender. Basically one cohesive up and running like basic tutorial then basically we cover up start making things inside that. So I'm gonna focus more on foliage because that's my core skill set we're gonna continue with environment. And that's why I want to get with it because I love doing multiple stuff and. As we're gonna keep covering bunch of the stuff it will be easy to uh. It will be easy to you know focus on those techniques so let me know if you want to learn any specific technique and if you have. Trouble with the that technique on your environment then I can definitely look at it in the feedback session which is happening tomorrow. So yeah so keep sharing it in your thread uh if you having trouble with thread ask in the normal discussion channel. I will help you figure out how to make the thread properly okay. So yeah again thank you very much for being here and watch till the end. And keep doing the uh updates in your environments posted in the your channel share it for if you need feedback. And do motivate others also give feedback ask what they how they are doing appreciate their work. It's just like slight comment can you know give morale boost to other also. So yeah keep up your work and as always I'm always here to support so yeah. Take care and I will see you guys tomorrow bye.